On Saturday, it was just phenomenal to be there and to shake the hands of so many students that have gone through our system since they were
Babies.
Five, four years old. So, thank you to everyone who helped make that a huge success. So, are we doing that first or a public comment? You want to do your, we want to do that, right?
We do that.
Yeah.
Retirees, yes.
Public meeting announcement?
Oh, oh, yeah, hold on.
Hold on.
In accordance with the requirements of open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel. Okay?
Okay.
Time to
Yeah.
Honor retirees. So, it's my honor this evening to recognize the retirees. They join a prestigious group of retired Lunenburg Public School employees. When added together, these employees have 161 years of service to our students, schools, and community. It's my hope that the benefit our children derive from their dedication, compassion, and hard work is repaid in kindness with long, happy, healthy retirements sprinkled with memories of successful, fulfilled careers. And on behalf of our school community, I extend to each of them our heartfelt thanks and sincere appreciation for their service to the Lunenburg Public Schools. Thank you all. So, we'll begin with Maria Cordamash. Primary school, grade two teacher with 35 years of service. Beginning as a substitute teacher, she knew immediately that this was the career for her. Moving to the role of a special education tutor in 1984, she excelled in small group instruction where she encouraged her students to be active learners and recognized their own strengths. She knew the primary student population was the right fit for her and remained as a grade-two teacher for the rest of her career. Using wit and humor to her advantage, she would often tell humorous stories to both students and staff with that mischievous gleam in her eye that would gain their attention. Always presenting children in a positive light, she set high expectations for the success of her students. To her colleagues, Maria treated others with kindness and compassion and was always there to listen and mentor. Her work did not stop during the school day. As for many years after school, she was an instructor for various activities such as hiking, T-ball, tumbling, skip rope, math curriculum task force, and many more. Her skills are boundless. Congratulations, Maria.
If you want to come over there and say something.
Come right up.
I just want to say that I've loved working at Lunenburg. It's a great place to work. The students are wonderful, and I've had many memories of wonderful colleagues that I will never forget. It's a great place to work. It's a great career. Thank you.
Our next retiree is Lorraine Lori McDougal, primary school art teacher with 30 years of service. Known to everyone as Mrs. Mack, her career began as a student teacher in 1987. In 1988, she was voted outstanding senior in elementary education by Pittsburgh State University. From this, she moved to the role of first substitute and then grade-three teacher for 10 years before becoming an art teacher guru that she is today. From day one, she was one of the most requested teachers in the school and always took great pains to break down every lesson step by step so it was accessible to all students. In her classroom, you would frequently see her stop by a student to ask how they were doing that day, how she could help them, and she would share an interesting story about her many adventures. Her students were hooked. That's a talent for a teacher. A parent once commented, "She seems to build into all the children a sense of caring about one another. They function like one big family despite their different personalities." Lori herself said in the past, "My belief is that the arts can and will help to preserve the humanity, compassion, and creative drive in all of my students." We know from the many successes shown by students and staff that are connected to Lori, she has succeeded in her beliefs. Her future plans in retirement, she intends to spend as much time as possible with her father, taking him to antique car shows and out for ice cream. They both enjoy that very much. She'll have more time to have adventures with her nieces and nephews who range in age from four to 14. She'll have time to spend on art and on numerous children's books that she's writing and those that she wishes to write. She also has a goal of visiting as many national parks as she can, beginning with the ones nearby and then branching out. And she's sure that she'll find herself teaching in some manner because a teacher is what she is and always will be. Congratulations, Lori.
It's been my great pleasure and honor to serve the children and the community of Lunenburg for all these years, and I look forward to any other ways I can help out in the time to come.
Our next retiree is Denise Galloway, administrative secretary with 23 years of service. Beginning her career in Lunenburg as a library tutor, started Denise off with the interpersonal skills needed to work with students and staff. Her self-motivation and positive approach gained her the administrative secretary position she still holds today. Always willing to help others and put her needs last, has won over the staff, students, and parents that have worked with Denise for years. A master at multitasking, Denise could answer a phone, help a parent who walked in, copy material, and help a staff member all at the same time. I've witnessed this myself. Adaptability is her middle name, as she has weathered the storm through three different schools and principals, all the while taking it in stride. Offering praise, compassion, and worldly advice are Denise's strengths, always with a fantastic smile. Staff, parents, and students alike will miss her beloved Denise and her legacy and the mark she has made on the district. Denise's future plans include spending more time with her family and friends, especially her granddaughter, doing some traveling, visiting her family in Ohio, North Carolina, and friends at the Cape, Maine, and Rhode Island. She's looking forward to getting back to some of her hobbies of crocheting, quilting, and gardening. And she loves to read, so she's hoping to have more time to read and exercise. Congratulations, Lori.
I'd just like to say it's been a real privilege to work for the Lunenburg Public Schools, and I've had, met so many friends and had so many friendships, and I've just been truly blessed with the faculty and the staff and the children, and thank you very much.
Our next retiree is Pat Siciliano, primary school paraprofessional with 23 years of service. Pat began her career in Lunenburg as an individual reading tutor in the fourth grade. Her real calling, though, was working with special education students with behavioral challenges. She had a special connection to these students and would always know how to de-escalate them or provide humor with her infectious laugh. Quick on her feet and able to switch from one activity to another quickly, she kept her students on their toes. Just as talented with her detail-oriented nature, Pat was a process coordinator for most years that she worked in Lunenburg. Carrying around her calendar filled with notes, she was a scheduling diva. To the staff that worked with her for years, she was a leader among them, always willing to pitch in when necessary or stay longer to get the job done. Pat's future plans, in retirement, she hopes to do some traveling, gardening, and to tackle some home projects. Most especially, she's looking forward to having more time with her husband and her children and four wonderful grandchildren. Congratulations, Pat.
This has been such a privilege and such an honor to work with the children and the staff at Lunenburg, and I thank you all so much.
We have a couple of retirees who were not able to join us tonight. I'll get to them in a minute. Next up is Ida Murphy, preschool special services teacher with seven years of service. Ida, as staff calls her, has always worked with and had a passion for students with multiple disabilities and severe special needs. Able to handle crisis situations and interventions with smooth ease, have earned her the respect and admiration of any coworker who has had the honor of working with her. Ida differentiates instruction using assistive technology skillfully so that all students have a chance to participate fully. Evident from her impeccable attendance record, children come first in Ida's eyes as she doesn't feel right taking time off. Staff would describe Ida as an extremely knowledgeable mentor who, with her calming demeanor, would make anyone comfortable. Ida is the type of person who will never stop in retirement, and hopefully she will come back to sub. Congratulations, Ida.
I just want to say that I'm really thankful for having been with Lunenburg for seven years. I've been teaching for 33 years altogether, and it's been wonderful to end my career in this school system. I am so blessed to have worked with so many wonderful people. My preschool team, I cannot say enough about them, their talent and their dedication, and just everybody at the primary school have been so wonderful. I am just so grateful. Thank you so much.
So, there are a couple of other retirees who couldn't be here this evening. Janet Marshall, Turkey Hill Elementary School with 22 years of service. Janet has had the chance to show all facets of her talent in Lunenburg. Starting as a parent coordinator of the cultural enrichment program at TCP was just the beginning. Through her tireless efforts to secure grant funding, students benefited from a diverse program in the arts. Starting as a first-grade teacher in 1997 after tutoring and substitute teaching, it was obvious her knowledge of reading and writing strategies. Certified in Project Read and versed in great books and six traits of writing, her colleagues sought after her for mentoring and support, which led to being a master teacher. Her students benefit from her special education background in which she uses multi-sensory approach in her classroom. Her soft-spoken voice and quiet manner puts students immediately at ease, while her empathy and understanding for her students has been vital to their success. A lifelong learner, she is constantly striving to increase her knowledge and share her knowledge with others. Her colleagues would describe her as a trusted and respected team member whose dedication and commitment to quality public education is unmatched. Her future plans include traveling a bit, and she's also looking forward to having a more flexible schedule and being able to participate in activities that she loves to do on a whim. It's nice not to have a schedule. She also intends to spend some quality time with her family, her grandchildren, and friends. The next retiree, Cindy Mobley, kindergarten paraprofessional with 21 years of service. Before beginning her long career as a kindergarten paraprofessional in our district, Cinni, as her staff call her, was employed as a special education bus driver. Knowing the calm, caring manner she used when interacting with children, she was a perfect fit for Lunenburg and was hired. Starting at the old primary school, you could usually find Cindy helping the teacher or students, and that's what she did best. Outside of school, her service to students never stopped while being a Sunday school teacher, Cub Scout leader, volunteer in the school library, and an arts and crafts teacher to senior citizens. Her little-known talents include calligraphy and toll painting, to name a few. Her kind and giving nature is what students and staff miss most. Congratulations to all of our retirees with our gratitude. Thank you so much.
They're going to take a few minutes. They want to take some photos. I'm sure you don't want to stay for the rest of the meeting.
But we will move this around for public comment.
Together, I think that we can, um, let's actually, we're gonna, uh, six or seven hours, the retirees taking hours.
Yeah, it's a little hard.
It's just a matter of, you know.
That's, I'm, 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 I'm.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
161 years of service.
161 years of service.
We definitely have a lot of staff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I want to get closer.
That's.
We need a stretch.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I didn't, I didn't, like, that's, I stopped, I can't get them, you should go, okay.
And it does, but it's.
I know.
Around the.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I didn't, I didn't, like, that's, I stopped, I can't get them, you should go, okay.
And it does, but it's.
I know.
I know.
Around the.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, I don't think that's like the best thing. I started getting them used to going back in. And it does really, but it's funny.
Yeah.
I know. I know. Around the world.
Yeah.
No, we're gonna go one thousand and one. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yes, I understand. Okay. Well, good talking. Yeah. 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 He's on Friday. What else is he doing? Yeah. Yeah. You were still in DC. Still in DC, yeah. 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 He's tracking first, although we have tomorrow. He's got some downtown. Yeah. 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 Yeah, but then. Yeah. 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 It's anything because you just had new athletic one. That one, yes. Yeah. 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 Okay, we're gonna start working again. Okay. Bye. Thanks. Take some snacks. Take some snacks with you. Yeah. Come on. So now we're up to our first public comment on agenda items. Do we, does anyone have a comment to make? Public comment? No? Okay. Um, we have warrants on the table to approve, line item transfers, and a budget update. You're gonna tell us about that.
Yes, so the line item transfers this evening really are tied to a budget update.
Okay.
So I would invite Mr. Cassidy up to the table.
Okay.
I just, we're providing a quarterly update on how the budget is going, and the budget is in good shape. We've got a few negative accounts that we've identified in your budget, and the, many of the transfers that we're proposing will take care of those negative balances. I can address any line item transfer that you have concerns over. One thing I did promise the committee that I would address that unemployment, negative balance, so that's being addressed in this transfer.
Does anyone have any questions? This goes with the budget update, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So the only question I had was in regards to, that's not it. The substitutes. How we seem to be over in all of the substitute lines. You're rectifying that with this transfer.
We are reconciling it. We are, all I can, we are monitoring our absenteeism in schools very, very closely.
Okay.
I, people are getting sick.
No, I just want, it was regular teachers, correct?
What?
It was, it was our teachers, correct?
It's, it's teachers and paraprofessionals that hit those accounts.
Okay.
And from my experience and from what I've seen, there is no regular abuse of employees, but we're digging deeper, and we're trying to catch patterns on employees and try to, try to stop that.
Okay.
We've, it's really been a, a goal of the superintendent and myself to really dig a little deeper and make sure that there is no abuse. Our staff has been going up, so that, I mean, that's one of the, our substitute accounts have been level funded for year after year after the year.
Yeah, I was just wondering if there was a need to increase, like, to look into next budget season.
Right. And our staff has increased, and not necessarily teachers, but our paraprofessional staff has increased. And, you know, those, those accounts cover some of our secretaries when they take a vacation day, and the secretaries are great. They don't abuse sick time at all, but from time to time, they do take a little trips or an extended weekend or something, or, so it's, it's coverage for that.
Okay.
So, if, if there's, we will continue to take a look at it. If there's some, something that we want to report or something that we want to throw into negotiations, we can certainly make, make that recommendation moving forward.
Okay.
Right.
That was the only thing that stood out in your update.
Okay.
To me. Did anything stand out to any of you?
Nope.
No?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So you recommend approval on the line item.
That will help balance out.
Yeah. All the negatives.
All the negatives, yep.
We have minutes to approve for May 22nd, regular session.
Don't we have to vote on?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I'll take a motion.
I'll move to approve line item transfer, one money, eight hundred, fifteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two dollars for various accounts. Two various accounts.
It's one of the first pages, Carol.
As.
Don't have it.
Reconciled by the, by Mr. Cassidy.
Second.
All in favor? Do you see it?
Nope.
It should have been dropped in there earlier.
It's in there.
That's.
Nope, thank you. I don't have that. Okay. All right. Okay.
You did?
Yep, I'm good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then the minutes? Did you all review the minutes? I think we made updates.
Yes.
I did review them.
Yes, correct?
I wasn't here.
So I'll take a motion to approve the May 22nd regular session minutes.
I'll move to accept the May 22nd regular meeting minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Do you have a report?
I do.
Other than, okay.
So a little bit of an update on the extended day changes. So currently I'm exploring a short stay or a late pickup option for parents needing an hour or less time of, of coverage between school dismissal and the time that they can pick up their children. We've done some initial exploration relative to interest amongst our paraprofessionals. You might recall that part of our budget process, we reduced hours.
Yes.
For some of our paraprofessionals, so we inquired as to whether or not there would be interest amongst our paraprofessionals to staff this sort of an option. We envision this to occur at the primary school and the Turkey Hill. We're thinking that we're looking at probably about 25 students at each location that fall into that category of needing an hour or less. So there has been some interest expressed by the paraprofessionals. So at this point, I'll be working with the team to, to fine tune the details of how that option might work, and I'll bring that to you for your consideration at the next meeting. I have also, in the same context of the challenges around the, the changes that were made to extend a day, I have had a meeting with Michelle Belisa, the director of the Boys and Girls Club. We discussed the challenges. Unfortunately, the Boys and Girls Club is not in a, in a position currently to expand their programming due to funding and space. I also had a meeting with the director of the Lunenburg Public Library, and we discussed the ways that we could connect parents with caregivers, babysitters. So we talked about the possibility that the library would host a job fair for childcare in the fall, and that might include students who have taken their babysitting workshop at the library. It might include students who have gotten their babysitting certificate through the Red Cross, and honestly, it might include some adults in the community that might be looking to help out the community by providing some, some childcare for, for families. So those things are in the works, but I'll have a more detailed proposal for you on that short stay or delayed pickup option next meeting. All right, so I also wanted to make you aware that there are some new developments going in, in Lunenburg. There's a development going in on Howard Street. Apparently that development was held up for several years in litigation, but it was recently remanded back to the planning board for approval. The planning board is expected to have its final meeting on, on this development on June 10th, and potentially after that meeting, the builder can proceed. We're talking about potentially 122 homes in this development. 20% of the total homes will be age restricted. Additionally, there's a Hollis Hills project, that's a 40B project, and that project was originally filed with the town back in 2007. This development also went to court, and a final decision was rendered in 2016, which would allow the builder 136 condo units. The property for this development, the entire parcel is currently being advertised for sale, and the town is inquiring with the state as to whether the comprehensive permit has expired for that parcel. I will remain in communication with the town manager regarding these potential developments as they will have an impact on the school department as well as other services and town departments. You may wish, if you're available, you may wish to attend that planning board meeting June 10th.
June 10th. Mm-hmm. Next one.
And lastly, you've heard me mention, as part of the work that I've done with the entry to the district, the next stage of this work is to develop a district strategy for improvement. That strategy, while it will align, I think, pretty well with the current strategic plan for the district, the district strategy is really gonna focus on ways that we can improve teaching and learning. And I wanted to give you a sense of what the areas, the big umbrella focus areas will likely be when I bring that strategy forward to you this fall. One being culture and climate, a second being communication, a third transforming teaching and learning, and lastly, equity access and opportunity for our students. And that's all I have for this evening.
So our first new business item is the Best Buddies Student Conference.
I'd like to invite Amanda Duggan to the table.
So my name's Amanda Duggan. I am a chief teacher at the Lunenburg Public High School, and I'm also the advisor for the Best Buddies Club. Each year, as part of your Best Buddies organization, you're required to send at least one student to the leadership conference in Bloomington, Indiana. So this year, we actually have two students who offered to go because they were younger in age. We figured it'd be better for them to travel together than individually. Right now, they are currently freshmen, they're going to be sophomores. It is our upcoming president and secretary of the club. So I polled area Best Buddies organizations. Eight of them that I polled got back to me and said that seven of the eight do not send advisors with the students, the students go alone. It is a very well organized leadership conference where they even send out a list of recommended flights for the students to take so that they are, they end up being grouped on the same flight with students near them. So I am requesting that the students be able to attend this conference in Indiana.
Don't, well, the question I had was funding. So do they pay for the tickets themselves? Does it come out of the activity fund?
So Best Buddies, our organization does fundraising throughout the year, and that fundraising cost, that fundraising money covers their cost into the conference as well as their boarding and food while they are there. Their flights are covered through the activities.
Activity fund?
Yeah.
They'll be reimbursed through the activity fund. I, I think ultimately we would look to find fundraisers that would raise enough funds that they could cover the whole cost of the conference. This is something that has apparently been happening, but I wanted to make sure that it came through.
I was gonna say, I don't think it's ever come through.
No.
It's never come through us. I know that students have attended.
Yeah. We had a student attend last year.
Well, my feeling was, since this is an overnight trip and an out-of-state trip, I really wanted it to come before the board.
And it should.
This is my first year too.
Yes. So.
You mentioned age limits. What are the ages of the students there?
The students are 15.
They're grabbing along, or?
One of the fathers is going with them.
Just as an extra, correct?
Just as an extra. He's not attending the conference, he's just, is flying with the children.
And we won't be reimbursing that flight, we would be reimbursing the flight of the girls.
Students.
Yeah.
And what were the dates on that?
June 9th, I'm sorry, July 19th through 22nd.
Okay.
It's a Friday through Sunday.
Okay. So I need a motion to approve.
I can move to approve the Best Buddies Leadership Conference attendance.
I'll take a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Extended day and early learning center handbooks.
Good evening. I'm here to present for approval of the handbooks for our program. The only piece that I really changed from the before and after school program is that I took out the early learning centerpiece and created its own handbook, so now we have two.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
Did anyone see anything that they had questions in regards to? Jim, you look like you're posing a question.
No, I'm.
Not a lot of big changes.
I won't try to remind myself of what I, what I saw.
Oh, the, yeah, the highlights.
Well, and not everything that was changed was highlighted. Addie Nurse seems to have been a new.
Yes, that was with the approval.
Yeah.
Of all the changes for the upcoming year.
And a lot of it is just, just some language cleanup.
Yeah. Yeah.
Nothing major, except for just making the two separate handbooks. Just good.
Additionally, if I, when I bring that additional option forward for your consideration at the next meeting, I will also have recommended language for the handbooks for the primary, the Turkey Hill, and for these handbooks as well about, you know, that additional option. That if you approve that additional option.
This is the language that will go along with it.
Right.
Do you have any data on how many students were removed each year during the program? I was reading about behavioral issues.
I, only one has ever been removed, and that was way back in the day when I first started with the extended day program, but that wasn't, that was.
That was 30 years ago, wasn't it?
Yeah, that was a long time, a long time ago. Right now, we just try to get the extra support for people with the behavior, but we haven't had to remove anybody as of yet.
Great.
So I'll take a motion to approve the.
So I just wanted to make sure I was clear on.
Her, oh, the addition.
That this is outside of the proposal, whatever potential proposal could come to us next week.
Correct.
This is a handbook, right.
Could be another version of this document.
Well, no.
Separate program.
Just the language that would be added to the document.
Well, right. If it's.
If it's.
Another version of this document with the additional language.
Yes.
Okay. So we might be approving this handbook in the next, twice in the next three weeks.
When I bring forward the proposed alternate option for parents, there will be handbook language as part of what I present to you. That handbook language would go into the primary school handbook, the Turkey Hill handbook, and into the extended day handbook. It really wouldn't go into the.
Early learning.
No.
Early learning center.
Early learning.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so I'll take a motion to approve the extended day and early learning center handbooks as presented.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you very much. The facility fees proposal, Mr. Londa?
John Londa, Director of Facilities. Since the last meeting, we made the initial presentation on the proposal for facility use fees. I received two emails I just wanted to cover with, with you, that was response from the emails we sent out where we sent the proposal out, we sent out some analysis on, you know, what we expected costs to look like for the large, the larger youth athletic programs. So I received a reply from Mr. Chuck Karamash, President of the Lunenburg Youth Football and Cheer Association. His comments were that he was, he was glad about the, the reduction in cost for the use of the fields. He was concerned, however, about the cost of the Bengals storage shed. He stated that he knows that it resides on school, school property. They've claimed that, in the letter, he said that they've maintained it for the last, what, the last 20 years, and taking care of all the costs associated with it. And he was, he was asking about whether he essentially could swap the continued maintenance for that, for that $100 per month fee. And then he went on to say that, you know, they take pride in the shed, but it's very convenient for them for both practices and games. When, when we were looking at proposals, of this proposal, you know, we did account for what their expenses were for la, this last, this last year. So, you know, the rates that we put in dropped their use for the fields, but the cost for the storage on school grounds essentially put them back, right back to where they were for this year's cost. So it was, this is pretty much a wash for them. So it wasn't really an increase, but, you know, my take on it would be is that I think I prefer to see the lease payment associated with the property than, than to have them maintain it. I think I just thought I'd be, I'd be more apt to be able to take care of whatever needs to be done down there with the funds rather than just kind of relying upon, you know, whatever's gonna happen as far as volunteer labor to repair. So that was one of the emails. The second email I received was from the Girl Scouts, who, you know, wrote back that they recognized that we were trying obviously to reduce their rates, they appreciated that, but they're in a position that, that they feel like, you know, that they're not in a position to enter where any costs are incurred to be able to meet. They did ask about, you know, the larger scale, the one large-scale event, or larger scale events that they have. They mentioned the bridging ceremony, they actually have two, they also have a father-daughter dance, that's a, that's a big draw. But they wanted to be sure that they could, could still continue to have events like that. I wrote back and told them, yes, they would, it would be under whatever rates, you know, were adopted. So those are the, those are the two feedbacks I did receive. Didn't get anything from Lunenburg Youth Soccer or Lunenburg Youth Basketball, Junior Basketball.
Now, I appreciate the feedback, and I do, I tend to agree with you on the space for the shed. I think that it is a school building property that should be maintained by the school. So I would, I would back that. I agree. I propose.
Thank you for your work on this. I did have a question about how often the facilities fees would be reviewed.
You know, we've, we're doing it a lot more frequently than I probably would like, but I, I think it's, you know, every, every, I'd say every three years would be an appropriate amount of time. You wanna, you know, you do need to kind of count for changes, and the, the labor rates that we have in here now, this is, is three years when we'd be changing those. The other ones, like I said, there's probably less need to bump those as frequently. We went quite a while, I think we went six to seven years between.
For the last one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But then the last one to now, it'll be like two years.
Right.
But it's more of a change of structure.
Right.
And, and that's really driving this, but it does allow us to go look at everything and kind of come up with.
Yeah.
Some things that we didn't have before, such as we didn't have anything for the press box, concession stand, you know, and we added other, other facilities that we didn't have on the last go-around of rates. So it also, one of the benefits, I think, and this was, allowed us to really look at the gymnasiums and, and really to assess that, you know, if you've, if you get the middle school, high school gym, you get a huge, huge space and, which is, gives us great capabilities, but it's really not fair to say, well, it's comparable to Turkey Hill's gymnasium or the primary school gymnasium because it's just, that was that, much smaller. So I would say about three, three years would be inappropriate, but you could go longer on the rates, and I don't think that's a big problem.
Okay. Any other questions? No?
Make a motion to accept the facilities fees proposal?
Second? Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Londa.
Thank you.
Concession, concession stand procedure.
Again, Mr. Londa.
It's Londa. We were just talking about this. Wait, where is that? Is it in the?
It's in here.
It is, right?
Yep.
So on the concession stand, so we've been kind of working this for over like the last eighteen months or so. And what we kind of thought we needed to do at this point is really just to kind of drive down to, come to conclusion on a concept of operation, which would then allow us to go ahead and work forward for, you know, policy from the school committee's perspective and procedures from the operational perspective. So we took a look at the possibilities and tried to put some costs associated with it, take some analysis on, you know, what it would take, what, or the concepts that were viable, you know, and what were the strengths and weaknesses in those. So that, the concession stand memo that we put together kind of outlines a lot of that. So as the facility currently stands, there's some shortcomings that we, we don't have in the facility that we thought needed to be addressed. Those would be some additional storage. Right now, we have really three lockable spaces that people can, can use freely seasonally. We thought that it might make sense to add some additional storage, you know, that, one, that we would control the storage and that we would have something that somebody could use, get a key for, but that we would still maintain a master key that allows us access. If we needed to get in and take a look at what was in there, we could do that. So, so we saw some of the changes. We thought we needed potentially a chalkboard or a whiteboard, something to be able to, you know, put up what's, what is for sale. And we thought, you know, there needed to be some kind of at least warming capability. And this is a very, very, very limited proposal, so not, not like a hot box, but just maybe some, some surface mounted heating lamps, just to give some capability, hold, hold heat on an item. So we had, had those in mind. So, and then we thought, looked at other possibilities. So we looked at one concept, the retail sales idea where, okay, you're re, you're either selling a prepackaged product that you're selling, whether it be water bottles, you know, drinks, Gatorade, something like that, or it was something like, you know, chips or things that are already prepackaged and could be sold, or something that was prepared in a kitchen such as a pizza parlor or a sub shop and was brought to the, to the site and could be sold. So that, if you go, we go the route of retail sales, there isn't, it's not considered a food service establishment, which limits a lot of the requirements for things like a three-bay sink and grease straps and, and doesn't allow for the preparation of food on site, but it does allow some capabilities for, for sales and allows at least places where somebody might be able to sell things. We had a second concept which looked at allowing some food preparation, you know, if someone has a, has a license to be able to do that. So that will put the burden on the using users to have a license to operate, which means they would have to have the license. They would have to bring a copy of the license. We're looking at the food service director to kind of be the manager of this operation. So they conceivably could bring a license for an event, and then, but then they would require, though, that we upgrade the facility to include that three-bay sink and grease straps and, and, you know, and all the things that will take it to be able to be a food preparation location. And then we'll also, that, once you launch into that, you do pick up some additional costs associated with like cleaning grease traps, you know, and maybe some inspections. We assume those were minimal, and so what we, what we carried as costs are about the, probably the bare minimum we could expect to get. Regulate, and that's assuming we're going to get some waivers from the sewer department on the grease trap. So, you know, they have, they have like a monthly cleaning requirement, but even our schools don't, don't meet that standard or have been granted waivers to be able to do just two cleanings a year. So we're assuming this would go to once a year, probably in the fall, at the end of the fall season as we're preparing the, this building to be able to go through the winter. That would be when we would clean it. And then the third option was to look at, you know, a district operated food service establishment where essentially the district is running this and has one permit pulled and, and everybody essentially becomes a part of the organization. And, you know, we'd have obviously really tight rules so that, you know, you're going to be very limited in how you can operate, but, but it would provide an umbrella operation for the overall thing. You know, and that comes with, with other issues such as the level of, the level of time that the food service manager would have to, you know, provide coverage on this event to make sure it stays in compliance. So, you know, so we have tried to get these all put together and give you some sense of the analysis. So one-time costs, if it's just a retail operation, we came up at sixteen hundred and thirty-two dollars and said that's just, the big part of that was just additional storage. And then, you know, if we have to put, go to food service operation, now you're just upgrading the kitchen. So it's going to be able to pass an inspection with the three-bay sinks and the grease straps. And you probably need, you know, an oven and some kind of vent, hood vent included. Annual costs, they said, you know, the annual cost just as a retail operation might be just making sure you're restocking, first aid kit, make sure you got, you know, working fire extinguisher, things like that. And then once you get to food service permit, then you, then you're into the grease traps. Like I said, those are, those are still kept low, assuming will be waived on a lot of this stuff. And then, you know, we looked at, at things like potential for margin, flexibility for users, and level of monitoring. You know, the level of monitoring, obviously a retail operation, you know, we still want to have some level of monitoring, make sure that people are complying with the rules, but, you know, it's not a food service operation, not doing inspections with the Board of Public Health. Once you get into it, they start just getting higher and higher. The, the district run food service one becomes the biggest, I think, the biggest challenge because now you're probably also into managing food on site in some form or fashion, and that's just going to take higher, higher levels of management. The potential margin, so this is something I would, you know, is not something I would say is an area I have any kind of expertise in. We did do some events over Memorial Day. We did this three-day soccer tournament, and we ran the concession stand in support of, of that soccer tournament. We did one day where we had a booster club go out and run it. And then we did two days where our food service folks ran it. And my experience on that was nobody made any money, unfortunately. The, the booster club bought about two-hundred and fifty dollars worth of material or product and sold about two-hundred. I wouldn't say they're out the fifty dollars because they still have product, but they didn't really clear a lot of money. And this was an event, we had quite a few people on school grounds for a long time, you know, and maybe there was something about the nature of the event that didn't lead itself to lots of people using the concession stand, but they didn't make, really make much at that event. And then the second event was, the second and third day, our food service folks ran it, and, you know, they had, you know, a fair amount of sales. I would say they covered their cost plus some for, for product, but they, but the labor pretty much, they couldn't cover the labor. And if we're, we had made enough money on the event to cover the labor, so it was, it was kind of a wash. And, but, but it was a valuable experience because it does tell us a little bit about the problems if we try to operate it. If we have our people there, they're, they're in an overtime capacity and at twenty-five dollars an hour or twenty-eight dollars an hour, you're eating into what revenue you might potentially make. I only say that because it's a district run. There is, you know, we obviously want to have somebody on site all for when the, when it was running that's safe, or safe-serve capable.
Safe-serve.
Or somebody that, you know, was going to be able to operate it, such as a school kitchen worker. But that does, it just adds a cost. So my take on it is that this might be the, that the retail operation is probably the most, you know, it limits the flexibility for the people that are using it, but it does limit some of our costs on both upgrading the kitchen, annual cost to operate. If there's some flexibility for the users in that they obviously can, can decide, well, okay, you know, this is going to be a really warm day. We want to sell, you know, ice cream or something, you know, and something that, that they decided because it's a warm day that they want to have. So there is some flexibility. So, but I, I think, you know, my recommendation on this, of course, would be that we promote the, the retail operation. And we did send this out to the boosters and musicators. I haven't really gotten any feedback from them about it.
I know I reached out to all the booster clubs that are part of the Athletic Advisory and informed them that we're going to be talking about this tonight. I don't see anybody in the audience that's participating in that. We did have our meeting last night. There was some discussion around the concession stand and the, the food truck pilot. See if there's any, any feedback on that as well. But basically, what used to be a moneymaker for these booster clubs being able to bring in their crock pots or whatever has been donated, as you mentioned, is now eliminated, pretty much because they have to buy retail things to sell at retail price, and they're not getting the margin that they need or that they used to have. So it's a big hit financially for these groups. And that's more like musicators as well. I haven't had the opportunity to talk to them yet. And it seems like the path of least resistance is certainly to go with the, the retail option. Instead of spending the money to, to make something that they're still not going to make money on, it doesn't make sense to throw good money after, after that, in my opinion.
I think some of the booster clubs have already opted out of their snack shack for the fall. I heard soccer isn't going to open it in the fall because of, they didn't feel like they made any money last year. And I believe field hockey is debating it, depending on how many evening games they have. Because it also takes away from watching your student athlete play a game.
Right.
If you're in the snack shack, working it as a volunteer.
And they mentioned relative to the food truck, that the pilot, that they made sixty dollars.
The field hockey, yes, sixty bucks.
And I've had no requests for a food truck this spring season.
Yeah.
That was just that one time that we tried it in the fall.
Yeah, we didn't, lacrosse just decided not to. And even though it made only sixty dollars, the whole point of it for that one evening was to give people the option for good food as opposed to the same pizza that they were having.
Right. And I guess the only, the only way that this would make sense to, at least the boosters that we talked to, would be for them to, you know, bring their own, if they can cook in the kitchen and bring their stuff at a kitchen with the donated food. I think that's the only thing that would make any sense to them. But then we still have the labor costs, as you mentioned, of having the food services folks there that are safe-serve certified.
Right.
And so that would eat into whatever benefit they could have possibly gotten from bringing their food to cook and stick in a crock pot.
I think that the warming tray, the warming lamps or whatever you were looking into might give them a little bit of a variety of an option if they could.
Keep his life warm.
Right. Well, I don't know.
I don't.
I was just trying to figure out what they might be able to put under the warming light.
Yeah, the only thing I could think of was, you know, keeping the pizza warmers.
Right.
You know, if you, you went to a sub shop.
Or you could buy your mac and cheese if you bought it somewhere made.
A tray.
A tray.
Or a tray of meatballs and you can make meatball subs.
Yeah.
Yep.
And that is more of an op, because.
Because you have a warmer.
People used to bring in meatballs in the crock pot.
Those were the types of items.
And that's what you're really looking for?
Right.
Yeah. But, you know, a, a parent might go and donate a tray of meatballs and buy it.
Can you assemble that?
Yeah.
Could you assemble the pieces in, in the snack shack, in a, in a concession stand under retail, under this proposal, could you?
Everything is purchased retail, as long as, I thought it was, as long as you wore net and gloves.
And I don't know. So I think this is, might be a question.
So that would be the only, yes, before we, and that doesn't require a Board of Health permit, right? That one, the retail?
The retail requires a permit, but it's not.
A permit?
Food service establishment permit.
Right.
I think each, each, for each sales needs to have a permit.
Because we did that last year. We had to get a permit.
But my, I guess my question is, is if you go to someplace and you buy a tray of meatballs.
However, oh.
That are cooked somewhere else and you bring them there, but you bring the, the sub rolls from BJ's or whatever, can you combine the two and still be considered under this retail model? Or is that now a hybrid? Because that wasn't.
Yeah, I don't know.
It wasn't together when you bought it.
It's almost like you'd have to buy an individually wrapped roll.
With the meatballs in it.
And put meatballs on the plate because you aren't, you know, if that was wrapped, then they could do it themselves.
And then people could buy the individual pieces.
Yeah, and put it together themselves.
So I think just with the conversations going on at this table, I think it's really important that the boosters are going to have to have some scenarios of what they can, can't do.
Right, absolutely.
And for them.
And really guidelines because it gets lost in translation from one booster to the next booster.
So one booster is doing.
And one booster is totally doing something different than the other booster.
I think having these discussions at the Athletic Advisory too is going to be helpful.
Yeah. So one of the things that Mr. Londa mentioned right at the top of his presentation was that whatever, if you, if you approve this option one that's being recommended, we would then make sure that we have school committee policy.
Correct.
Right?
Yep.
That outlines that operation. But we would also have procedural, internal documents that we would be sharing with the boosters as well.
Up in the, maybe up in the area to refer to.
Right.
So that one.
Eliminated poster.
Individuals are there. Yeah, they just need to be up so that you can refer to.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's important. So do we need to approve an option here?
Action.
Would you like an opt, is this, right?
I'd make a, make a motion to approve the recommended concept for the concession stand.
The first one.
The recommended concept.
Retail.
Retail.
Yes, okay.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Londa.
Thank you.
I'd also like to thank our food service director, Nadine Lorenzen, and Mr. Cassidy. They all worked.
Yeah, it's a.
To explore the details of, of the options that were presented to you, and it, it was a big project. So thank you all very much.
And thank you to the, the boosters as well.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
I would like to operate the, like, the standard operating procedures, what was saying posted.
Oh, good.
Great.
Oh, terrific. Excellent, thank you so much. Okay. Summers, summer athletic programs?
So you have two proposals for summer programs. Mr. Bunnell is here to answer any questions you might have.
Oh, okay, they're different.
Yep.
Okay. I did hear about this one, but I did not hear about, oh, yeah, okay, yep. I'm pretty sure that the basketball summer league usually takes place?
It.
Just not, not here?
Yeah, so normally, the, there's been a girls' summer league basketball operated through Gardner High School. Gardner High School decided this year that they weren't going to do it. So we, we normally, in the past, Lunenburg had a girls' team participating in the Gardner High School Summer League.
Yeah.
And also at Monty Tech. So when Gardner decided not to do it, Coach, Coach Green contacted me, said it's, it might be a good idea if we have this here so our girls have an opportunity to participate. I, I said, that sounds like a great idea. So when that came to fruition, Monty Tech then decided that they weren't going to run theirs. So, so it's just, it's just us. To have an opportunity for two girls' teams to be playing in, in our league here at our school, at our wonderful facilities, at, you know, no cost to the girls. It's basically made so that we can just take care of the, the expenses that are there and our girls have an opportunity to play.
And how many other teams with both of those schools?
It's been in flux for the past like two weeks. We had ten, we went to eight, we went back to nine, we're at ten again. And then today, we found out that another team went back down, stepped out. So Pittsburgh High is trying to help to get another team back in so we can be at ten. So we're in the eight to ten range somewhere right now.
Ten, um, teams?
Teams, teams.
Okay, all right.
So a school, like any other school could have two teams like us if they, if they had enough to have three.
But not schools. But not schools, it's not 8 to 10 school?
No, 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 no.
Okay. Okay.
And you mentioned no cost, but the proposals indicated a $100 maximum per team.
Yeah, if, it's all dependent on how many teams we have in. So the idea is to cover the cost of the officials. The first and second place team will get, like, a summer league champion shirt and the other one will just get, like, a runner-up shirt, as opposed to, like, a trophy or something like that, something that, when I talked to the kids, they felt like they'd rather have a shirt that they could wear than a trophy that.
Yeah. They all want clothes, it's gear, it's all about the gear.
So, so that's, so, the idea is to basically cover all that cost and then if there was anything that, if they needed to kick in a little bit, it would be very minimal, but...
It's $100 a team?
No, for us. If, if we need to.
Oh, okay.
Like I said, the idea was to, it's, we're running it so that our kids hopefully don't have to pay anything if, you know, after all the costs are said and done.
Yeah.
There's $50 that was left out somewhere.
Yeah.
I would then go to the team and say, "We need to come up with $50," so that it would just be.
Or any travel costs.
No, no.
At Lunenburg.
Well, it doesn't matter, with summer league things, with anything out of season, that doesn't.
That doesn't fall on.
That doesn't fall on us, we're just providing a place for them to actually have a summer league and participate in something.
That would fall on the parent.
Right.
Yeah.
Make sure that we weren't.
No.
Trying to bust anybody.
No, 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 no.
No, we would just be playing host to the summer league.
Right.
That's nice. Okay.
And that's for the girls' basketball?
Yes. Boys' basketball, they're still, they have theirs, I think it's, I want to say that one, the boys are running out of Marni Tech.
I don't know.
And then you had a second proposal.
Second proposal.
Mr. Short's leadership.
So, Mr. Short, who runs the captain's council, I know he was at your meeting last night talking about and discussing it. This is something that the students of Lunenburg High School wanted to do. They wanted to put together something to reach out to the youth groups, and they came up with the concept of having a youth sports clinic night, where I think June 14th, it's going to be a Friday night outside on the turf football field. There's a registration for parents to sign up their kids to come and learn from our student athletes of what we offer at the high school, free of charge. So it was, when it got brought to my attention, I thought it was a wonderful opportunity because it shows that, A, it was brought up by the kids, which that in itself put a huge smile on my face, but more importantly, it showed that those kids wanted to give back. You know, they have a talent that they want to share with these younger kids and hopefully the younger kids in Lunenburg will be able to see and look up to these, these people that are right here in their town. You know, I can go and cheer on so-and-so at a field hockey game or so-and-so at a basketball game. You know, that's, that's the biggest part of, you know, athletics is, you want eventually these young kids to be coming into the high school and middle school and playing, participating in sports and the better opportunity to learn from the people that are older and that are doing it and that they look up to. So it was, to me, it was a no-brainer when the kids came to me and asked. I know Mr. McGrath was in full support as well. There'll be plenty of coaches there and the parents, I mean, it's only an hour and a half clinic, so I don't think the parents or the kids that are going to be participating are going to go anywhere, they'll probably be hanging around and helping out or contributing or just even watching. But it's just a great, should be a great night and hopefully a night that can be not just one year, but several years to come.
It sounds great.
So we need to approve them?
I'd like for approval.
So I'll move to, we accept both proposals for the summer athletics, captain's council sport clinic flyer, that's free of charge on the 14th, and then the girls' basketball summer league as outlined.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hopefully the kids have fun.
Yeah. Hopefully the weather is nice.
I saw somebody come in here with an umbrella, I didn't know if it was raining.
I don't know. Okay. Finally, the draft school improvement plan.
So this evening, you have two draft.
Two drafts.
School improvement plans, one from the middle school, one from the high school. Again, these will come back before you in the fall, after I've had an opportunity to work with the leadership team. They'll have an opportunity to work with their school councils in September, should they want to make any adjustments to the draft that you have currently, to align with what we determine will be the actions for our strategy for improvement. If you have any questions, Mr. Santry is here this evening, but if you have any questions relative to the high school, I can certainly take those back to Mr. McGrath and get you some responses.
Did you have any questions when you read it?
I didn't have any questions.
I know I saw it.
No, I didn't have any questions.
No?
I liked what I saw so far.
Yeah.
I guess the only nitpick that I would have is that the formats are a little bit different.
Oh, yeah, it's a little, yeah, like, goal two needs to come down.
And so we could consolidate a format that is easily consumable by each school.
Agreed.
Oh, yeah, consistent, that would be nice, yeah. The same.
So we could compare apples and apples.
Yeah. Other than that.
I'll share it with her.
So. There's no action for this?
Nope. Other than if you had questions for Mr. Santry.
Are you running the high school, real quick?
Thanks for being here, though. And then, do you have any questions about the middle, the high school that we need?
I did not have questions about high school.
No.
Carol hadn't had an opportunity to see.
Okay. Oh, it's not?
It wasn't on her pack.
Oh, you know, sometimes it disappears and you have to reopen it.
Yeah, that's what I have to do.
I've had to reopen my email and then click back on it and it will show back up.
Yep, go back to, yeah, they disappear once you've gone into them.
Yeah.
Policies? Is that what's missing?
No.
Different folders, so what you dropped in.
Oh.
I look at it and it's all there.
And then all of a sudden it's gone.
And then, as I click on them, it's like they go away. And then if I want to go back into, like, one of the ones we previously looked at.
I've just done it.
I've done it, like, four times since I.
Wow.
I have to go back into my email.
Yep, I'll go into the email, click back in, onto the whatever.
Reopen the folder and they're all back.
Yep. Oh, son of a gun. There it is, right? That's exactly this, okay.
Yeah, that's always happened to me. I thought it was.
No, wow, it's not, because I just did it just now, because I went, where did that go?
Yep.
One thing I liked about the high school school improvement plan, it started off with listing the members and also who they represented. I think that was important. The middle school didn't have.
Oh, like, parent rep?
Yeah, student rep, parent rep, teacher rep.
They don't have a student rep at the middle school, I believe.
They do not.
They don't, only the high school does.
They never have.
Yeah. But you're right, they didn't have it listed as a parent, so if you.
They listed them, they didn't list their actual role.
Right, so if you don't know who they are.
That's right.
You know, and you might not. I see, yeah, I get that, so maybe.
Who'll make sure that they're uniform when they come out in the fall?
Yeah, okay. All right.
I like.
That was a good feedback.
Consistency and uniformity.
Exactly, it goes back to consistency.
We're working on that. You're right.
And where these were drafts, too, I wasn't, those, like, I was more looking at content than format, so it was great that you pointed that out, because.
Well, that's an easy thing, the content, yeah.
Right, right, right. Okay, so now on to old business, third readings of policies. 12102, 1104, 1105, 1106. Okay. Policy, hold on. What's, leave them in numerical order, though?
Yes. Do you want to start, do you want me to start?
Is it in numerical order or in the order in which they're printed, agenda?
No, numerical, I don't, I don't know why they're not in numerical for the next coming.
So they're in numerical in our piece, but not on here.
I know, they're in numerical in the file, but like, it's not on the agenda, so.
Sure.
Yeah. Just for future, we're going to have it numerical on the agenda. Yeah. Okay. The first one, 1104, so it's in the community relations section 1000, communications with the public, 1100, news media relations, new news releases, 1104. And I'll read this one. General releases of interest to the entire community will be made available to all of the media simultaneously. There will be no exclusive releases except as media representatives request information on particular programs, plans, or problems. In order that school department publicity is given wide coverage and is coordinated into the common effort and purpose, the following procedures will be followed in giving official information to the news media. The school committee chair will be the official spokesperson for the committee, except as this duty is delegated to the superintendent. Formal communication on behalf of, on behalf of the committee shall be brought before the committee for review and approval prior, prior to the release, if at all feasible. Two, news releases that are of a town-wide or sensitive nature or pertain to established committee policy are the responsibility of the superintendent. While it is impossible to know how the press will treat news releases, every possible effort should be made to obtain coverage of school activities which will create and maintain a dignified and professionally responsible image for the school department. And that is the new news media relations, news releases, policy 1104.
And would you like to, and would you entertain a motion to.
Approve it, yes.
1104 as read?
I'll take a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So 1104, well, now these ones are out of order. Who?
I can.
No, 1105 becomes 1101.
01 dot 1, as they're related.
Okay. So you want to read that one?
Sure. Community Relations 1000 series, communications with the public, series 1100, and this is 1101 dot 1. School community relations, it is the desire of the school committee that the citizens of the community be fully informed of their policies and actions regarding official matters, with the exception that deliberations on actions involving the discussion of employees and considered to involve matters of personal or private nature shall not be considered public information. It is the responsibility of the superintendent to employ such means as may be at his or her disposal to inform citizens of the actions, activities of the schools. It is his or her responsibility to remain sensitive to the interests and aspirations of the community and he or she may initiate efforts to assess these interests from time to time. The school committee through the superintendent will seek to keep the public informed as to the needs and activities of the schools. One, cooperation by schools with the various news media is encouraged. Two, the superintendent or personnel designated by the superintendent shall be encouraged to meet with organizations and groups in the committee to explain the school program and seek community views and opinions.
I will take a motion. That is the third and final reading of that one, and I will take a motion to approve it as read.
I will move to approve the policy communications with the public 1100 series, school community relations, 1101 point 1, as read.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. 1105, the public's right to know. Who would like to read that? Brian?
Communications with the public, 1100, public's right to know, 1105. The school committee is a public servant and its meetings and records will be a matter of public information, except as such meetings and records pertain to individual personnel and other classified matter. The exception to this will be information about an individual employee or student which has been authorized in writing for release by the employee or student or student's parent. No records pertaining to individual students or staff members will be released for inspection by the public or any unauthorized persons by the superintendent or other persons responsible for the custody of confidential files. The school committee supports the right of the people of the town to know about the programs and services of their school and will make every effort to disseminate information. All requests for information will be acted unfairly, completely, and expeditiously. The official minutes of the committee meetings, its written policies and regulations, and its financial records will be open for inspection by any citizen desiring to examine them. Each building administrator is authorized to use all means available to keep parents and others in the particular school, school's community informed about the school's program and activities.
And that is the third and final reading of communications with the public, 1100, public's right to know, 1105, and I will take a motion to approve that as read.
I move to approve the policy 1105, public's right to know, as read.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And 1201.
Okay, I can read that.
Thank you.
Community use of school facilities, 1200, general rules, 1201. The school facilities exist and are maintained to support the educational mission of the Lunenburg Public Schools. The school committee recognizes that the taxpayers of Lunenburg provide significant support for the construction and maintenance of the school facilities. It is the policy of the school committee to permit the use of the school's facilities by reputable and responsible organizations within the school district, subject to the control of the Lunenburg School Committee and to such conditions and regulations as it may establish. No such use of school facilities, however, shall at any time be allowed to interfere with or limit the regular work or extracurricular activities of the school program or of classes or activities of the school program or of classes or activities conducted under the direction of the Lunenburg School Committee. School equipment will not, will not be available to outside organizations except under very special circumstances and willing permission of the superintendent. Any equipment brought into the schools by outside or related organizations should not be considered school property, and as such, the school assumes no responsibility to the individual or group furnishing the equipment.
And that is the third and final reading of community use of school facilities, 1200, general rules, 1201. I will take a motion to approve that as read.
Make a motion to approve community use of school facilities, 1200, general rules, 1201, as read.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And now, our second public comment. Do we have any comments?
School committee calendar?
Oh, school committee calendar, I'm sorry.
So that was placed on the agenda this evening with the hopes that we would be able to set a date for a workshop meeting?
I was going to say, but we don't have that. We don't, she's not available.
Yeah.
Did we get any possible dates from Ms. Presser?
Oh, it's not her that's not.
She was pretty available.
It's us.
All of July.
None of us are, together, all at the same time.
Correct.
And she's not available that.
The date we looked at for June. Does she have any, okay.
So it's going to have to.
You're very busy people.
Did she have anything in late June, those initial dates that, or were we not all available?
No, it's us.
Even late June?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm going to look at the man in blue down there and I'm going to finger point.
I offered to dial in.
I know, I know, but that's not going to work, Jim, you can't dial in, we need your, we need you to be there.
Where does that leave us August?
After August fourteenth.
Oh.
Is she available next Thursday? Are you guys available next Thursday or sat out?
I can do thirteen, not twenty. It is the last day of school.
It is the last day of school.
I don't know if that affects anyone.
It's not Brian's last day of school though.
That is true.
What timeline are we looking at?
In the evening. If we were.
We usually try to start the workshop meetings around six or six thirty.
Six thirty would have, I've got to, I've got to work here today.
Okay, so six thirty. If Dorothy was available at six thirty on Thursday, would you be?
You're referring to the thirteenth?
On the thirteenth.
That Thursday, the thirteenth, yes.
Yes.
I do have something at night, but I can check about rescheduling.
Okay, first we have, let's check with Dorothy before you do anything.
I get out on the nineteenth, but I'm available.
But you're in the evening?
By three, four P M, so.
Yeah, okay. Just think that, like, waiting till August.
Oh, yeah, I don't wait till August.
It's not a good.
Well, we'll see if she's available.
Okay, alright, let's hope she responds in the next few minutes.
Come on, Dorothy.
That was the only thing, right? Because we already had the other part of the, I didn't even remember the calendar was on there. Because, I thought we already looked at it.
The other, the other item relative to the work of the committee through the summer. The meetings for the board of selectmen haven't been set yet for July. Once they're set. We'll have to work to get signatures on warrants to get them in front of the board of selectmen, so as soon as we. Learn what their meeting schedule looks like for July, we'll, we'll make you all aware.
Because we need three signatures.
A minimum of three.
Minimum of three on each warrant, so when we're all. Our schedules are weird, well Carol, you're okay in July.
I'm, I'm fine now.
We got one.
I'll be around all summer.
And we're, we're opposite.
Yep.
I'm around, I'm around.
Okay.
Especially in the evenings.
Okay.
It's gonna work better.
Okay.
But in terms of signing warrants.
Signing warrants, any warrants in July?
Typically during the day.
You're going to be around in July though?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Well, nothing yet.
Nothing yet.
Do you want to table, can I make a motion to table the school committee calendar, or, or move, can we move the item?
We can move it, we'll move, we can move public comment up. And hold off, right, hold that, hold that, we'll hold it. And move public comment, yeah.
Yes, so I'll, I'll move to take public comment out of order.
Correct, okay.
I learned from last night.
Yes, remember? Okay, I need a second, right?
Second.
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, okay, do we have public comment?
I don't think we're going to have public comments.
So one day we don't have.
Get to the mic.
So one day we don't have any. Shall we, shall we move, we'll just move on and we'll come back to that if she replies. Reports, finance committee, Carol, did you go in?
I do not have a report on that, I was away and did not go.
Yeah, right, okay.
Um, I do believe they're meeting on the thirteenth, however, but, um.
If we have.
Apparently won't go to that.
Right, if we have, you can. And I believe the P T O is on Monday. And I won't be able to go to that because it's a banquet. That would be the last one of their year. Until the school's season, school starts again. School councils, did anyone go, since are we yours now?
Not since we are.
Capital planning doesn't meet until. That's, you wouldn't have gone to that, capital planning, Brian, you, it's Jim, you, okay, I keep. Because that won't, that won't meet until the fall. Although they might start. In like September.
I'll be here.
Yeah, you'll be here in September, Jim? Just not, okay.
Probably.
Okay.
During the day. Uh, we did have athletic advisor, I don't, I see that wasn't on this.
No, that's just not listed, you're right.
We had that last night.
Yeah.
Brian has taken over, so. Feel free to give an update.
We met, uh, last night and we approved some fundraisers, improved minutes. And the fundraisers will be going to the athletic director.
Yeah. When is your next meeting, because I know that.
In September.
Okay, and did they tell you that the field hockey fundraiser? Was coming or no?
Yes, so we approved field hockey, football, and soccer.
Okay, I wasn't, okay, all good, the fall ones.
All for the fall ones, yes.
Okay, alright.
Now, two of them didn't have the forms, they said they would complete the forms and get those over to the athletic director and I reminded them today.
Okay, good, okay.
And then kind of did a handover of. Various things to, to Brian.
Did you have a big prestigious ceremony?
Uh, no, I actually had to leave, step out of the room at eight o'clock to, to get on a phone call and then they continued talking and then walked out of the building without saying goodbye.
We couldn't find them.
Okay.
As a cross hall. No, it was, it was no, no big ceremony.
Okay, no, okay, and did, do we, do you know if, are there going to be new representatives for some of the boosters? I think some of those were senior parents, right?
There are some, yeah.
Yes. So Amanda Walts has taken over for, um.
Joyce.
Lynn.
For who?
No, Joyce, um, football.
Yeah, Joyce.
Yeah, Joyce.
Okay.
And Lynn is stepping out and somebody else is coming in.
Robin Bersh?
Robin Bersh.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and you have all their contact information or?
We have the contact information for the people who attended the meeting.
Oh, but what about the new ones?
Um, I don't, we don't have Robin's.
Okay, I, I can for, forward that to you.
But I did share, forward it to Brian.
Okay, I'll forward it to you.
And I gave him the, the distribution list for everybody else.
Okay.
And I'll be talking to James as well.
Okay, alright. Um, topics for future discussion, fundraising is still on there?
Mm-hmm.
Are we? The workshop, what are we, um.
New workshop.
We're going to be doing the superintendent's review. And, um, we'll be sending out the rubric. Um, in the next week, right? Yeah. For you guys to look at and fill in and get back to me.
Okay.
Okay? Um, so that will be. Nothing? Has she written that?
Unfortunately, no.
It is a forty at night, just saying.
And we can always schedule via email as well.
Right, and that's fine.
Meeting law.
Right, we are not, okay, so, do we have any other topics for future discussion? That you want to add?
I was wondering what the committee thought about adding, uh, committee comments at the beginning, I've seen it at the selectman meetings where. The committee members, um, almost as a public comment. Would that be?
I think we typically will step in on public comment if we have something.
Yeah, they just do it in public comment. Like, I know, Jim, you've done it before.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, I think we all have on different occasions, so.
I, I think it's just up to the chair, he asks for public comment from.
The public.
Everybody on the chair, on, on committee and then he asks for public comment.
Okay, so I, if you want me to ask you for public comment, then I will. Before the public.
That would be good, rather than going directly to the public.
The public.
Today.
Today, we, this is.
The last few meetings have been.
Yeah.
Very well attended and, and there's been some very good feedback.
Yep. So, okay.
My public comment.
Is that your public, did we take that out of order, Jim?
I think so.
We did take it out of order, I know.
Um, okay.
And then another one I, I was thinking of too was whether we wanted to do the pledge of allegiance at the beginning of meetings.
Yeah, we had talked about that, the selectmen do it all the time.
Yeah, they do it.
Um, so that could, that could be a topic in our workshop, I don't know, I would be fine with doing that.[1757.82]